Good evening. Today is June 13, 2022. We are about to enter into executive session. This meeting is being called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting on June 13, 2022 was included in a list of meeting notices sent to the Hundred and County Democrat and Currier News on January 5, 2022, posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on that date, and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. We do have an executive session this evening. We're going into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice regarding the Liberty Village project. If we could have a motion to go into executive session on that topic.
Tilly, move.
One more second.
This hand, Mr. Johnson, this hand, Mr. Long?
Here.
This is our first absent, Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Right? Second session. Okay, thank you. Good luck with the meeting. And pause the recording. Good evening. Council is exiting executive session. We did have an executive session notice for the purpose of obtaining legal advice regarding the Liberty Village project. Action will be taken on that this evening in the form of a vote on the draft redevelopment agreement. For those who are watching, the redevelopment agreement, once it is voted on and presumably hopefully approved, it will become a public document. It will be posted on the Borough website at that point, I guess tomorrow. So we'll be back, and at that time, our redevelopment attorney, Andrew Brewer, will be joining us, as will our Borough Planner, Beth McManus, who will be joining us as well. And once we get into that regular meeting, we'll be asking council to move that up to be the first item on the regular agenda immediately following the consent agenda. Thank you. We'll see you back at 7:30, and we stand in recess.
Your mics are live.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It's 7:30, so we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is June 13, 2022. This is the Mayor and County Council Borough of Flemington. This meeting is being called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting on June 13, 2022 was included in a list of meetings noticed sent out to the Hundred and County Democrat and Currier News on January 5, 2022, posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on that date, and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. Earlier this evening, we did have an executive session to get some legal advice regarding the Liberty Village project. There will be action taken on that executive session information this evening in the form of a vote to adopt, hopefully, the redevelopment agreement between us and the developer there. And if we could all rise for the pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In his republic, which stands one nation, under God, in his business, with liberty and justice for all. Of the world. Mayor Driver?
Here.
This hand is excused. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Rosetti?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
Here.
Okay. Excellent. I will start with the mayor's report. I have a few things. You may have noticed, if you drive around the Union Hotel redevelopment area, the hotel puddings are starting to go in. The roads are a little muddy at times, and I do ask for everybody's patience as that happens. It will be an ongoing project to get those puddings placed. Dewey Avenue road construction started last week, finally. It was supposed to start over the winter. We had supply chain issues, but they have finally, the supply chain has finally caught up with the desires of the contractor and the borough, and they have begun. They did the, they did the storm sewer connections last week. This week will be water and sewer going in, and that should take a couple of weeks. Eventually, it's going to be sidewalks, curbs, and new pavement. Oakville Avenue will also be getting underway soon as well. It's the same contractor doing spouts, so they'll probably be moving and cruising around periodically between there. Our new water stand pipe is now live. The water that you were drinking today out of Borough Taps is coming from the new water tank. I don't know if they've started to drain the old one yet, but if they haven't, they will be starting that this week. Once that's done, that will be rehabbed. Some of the weak spots will be repaired. It will also be receiving a new paint job to match the new one as well. Eventually, we will have capacity to 1.24 million gallons of water in those tanks. Now, that whole thing came about, became very obvious that we needed that new stand pipe during the Turnpike Fire. And those of you who were in town at that time may recall that we almost ran out of water at one point during that fire. And so hopefully, with the second stand pipe, they're working in tandem with the new one and the old one. That won't happen again. Last week, I met with folks from Cardinal Capital. They are going to be redeveloping the Milkmanth property, the Guitar Boy property. It was just a little walk around the site to talk about a few things, and I expect that we'll be getting busy on a new redevelopment plan and an amended redevelopment plan for that property, as well as a redevelopment agreement that we will be talking about. I have yet to put a committee together on that property, and so that will be coming up soon. And I'm still thinking about who will be the best people to be on that. I met on 5/24 with the USDA, as well as our Borough Engineer and Mike Campion, our Public Works Director, to talk about available funding sources they have. You know, the new infrastructure bill at the federal level and the state, there's a lot of money out there, and we're hoping to tap into as much of that as we can. Additionally, I met with the LD-16 legislators at a public town hall. Thank you, Malik, for attending that as well. We mostly talked about liquor licensing, as well as energy tax receipts, and the importance of returning those to the municipalities, and again, infrastructure funding. I marched in the Memorial Day Parade with Council President Jeremy Long. That was a nice day, and it was great weather, and it was a great crowd out there as well. I'm also going to be meeting later this month with our tax assessor to review some of the tax exempt properties that we have around town to make sure that those tax exemptions are still covering the uses that they're supposed to be covering. And there's a few of them that I have earmarked that I would like us to review. Up there at the Park Avenue extension, if you drive by, you'll notice the road might look a little bit different at the urging of one of the residents there, who said, you know, people are ignoring the one-way status of that road. So they ground, basically, they blacked out the road by grinding off the old yellow lines, which they had blacked over a couple of times, but that stuff just wears off. They put in some arrows. It looks good. I'm real happy with the way it looks, and hopefully, it's keeping people from, you know, legal, going southbound down that street when they should be heading northbound only. Been in contact with JCP&L regarding the redundant Main Street lights in the streetscape area. Mike Campion, as well as one of our vendors, will be doing a light study out there one evening where they'll shut down the streetscape lights. They'll measure the existing lighting coming off the Cobra headlights. Then they'll figure out the math, and we'll see if we will have enough lighting on Main Street to remove those Cobra headlights. We have to quote from JCP&L to do it. One of the things that kind of caught me by surprise is they wanted to remove the aluminum poles, and no, no, we can't do that. We hang our Christmas decorations on there. But we're going to take the electricity out of the poles, so you'll have to have it rewired. So we're putting all that together. When JCP&L comes in to do that, they'll also be installing a light on William Street as well, and I'll be discussing that with the Public Works Committee tomorrow. This evening on the agenda is the Liberty Village redevelopment agreement with Hoboken Brownstone, and hopefully, that will pass. We did have an executive session earlier to talk about that. And also, we'll be getting, beginning the CATIVA North Main Street RDA negotiations. You may recall, this project's been kind of floating around. They have received, presumably, they will be receiving the public, planning for an approval on that project. That vote hasn't been heard yet. It's waiting for that redevelopment agreement to come to fruition. So they sent back the draft. We sent them like two and a half years ago through COVID, and so we have to kick that back and say, no, we want to make these changes to that. So that'll be happening as well. Again, I need to appoint a committee to handle that, and I have not done that yet. And that's all I have. We'll start with Councilmember Malik Johnson.
Thank you. I don't have much to report this week, but the yoga sessions that are going on at the Flemington House Museum, they're going very well. I just want to remind everybody that it's every Tuesday at 6:30 PM. Come join us. We had 14 people last week. And I was just going to take a moment to acknowledge Juneteenth. Somerset County, I'm sorry, Somerville and Lamberville are the closest places to us that we'll be celebrating as well. Juneteenth is the annual commemoration of the end of slavery in the United States after the Civil War. It has been celebrated by African-Americans since the late 1800s, and New Jersey made it a state holiday in 2020. President Biden finally signed legislation last year to make Juneteenth a federal holiday. That is, and that's all I have.
Next up, we'll go to Councilman Tony Parker. Tony, you're muted.
Well, that doesn't work now, does it? I don't have anything to report right now, so maybe by the next session, I'll have some good news.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And then we'll go to Councilperson Ms. Rosetti.
Thank you, Mayor. In speaking with our Code Enforcement Officer, Dave Giuliani, last week, everything is going well. He's handling some minor grass issues, overgrown brush issues around town for property maintenance, but nothing major to report there. Also, when contacting Fire Marshal Kim McCormick, they've been very busy over there, but operating as normal. They've been working very hard, getting inspections done for food trucks for some of the events that have been in town recently. So I just want to thank him and his team for all their hard work. That's all for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Councilmember Kim Tilly.
All right. I also attended the meeting with USDA, excuse me, on the 24th of May regarding additional funding for the borough. Going back to the 24th of May, I believe we've had three Liberty Village redevelopment meetings. I also marched in the Memorial Day Parade and filled my first search duty, helping manage traffic on the corner of Church and.
I'm sorry, I forgot to.
That's all right, Betsy. I know. Chop liver over here. That's all right.
Yeah, that was the best.
That was all the meetings that I did attend. Tomorrow is a biggie for me of DPW, Liberty Village Development, if you have one, and our Fire Officers Meeting. Wednesday is our HPC meeting. It will be hybrid, as is this council meeting, so if you want to, got nothing to do on Wednesday, 7 o'clock, come on down to Borough Hall. HPC will be here after the meeting. If not, you can dial us up online, or you don't have to do that either. And that's it for me. It's the best meeting of the month. I know, I'm telling you.
Next up is Council President Jeremy Long.
Thank you, Mayor Driver. Memorial Day Parade was great. Thanks, Kim, and thanks, Mayor Driver, for joining me. Not to be alone out there, because it's always nice to see the town alive and stuff like that, especially on that particular day. As far as police business, all I have is to just remind folks that on June 23, from 5:00 to 8:30, we're going to have the Flemington Police Community Night, and they're going to be holding that at the Reading-Fleming Intermediate School in town. So folks are urged to come on out, bring your family, bring your friends, bring your neighbors. There's going to be all sorts of activities, all sorts of demonstrations, and it's just a good, nice community event. They did this last year. It was in August, so it was really, really hot. So hopefully, this one won't be so, but it's always fun and exciting and real good stuff. FCP news, I have several items here. You'll see, probably see a large number of people walking around the, what we're calling now the South Side of Flemington in yellow safety vests on Tuesday morning or on Thursday evening. Please don't be alarmed. The FCP wants you to know that they are performing a walk audit with Dove Hunt as part of the NPP grant with a goal that's looking at our streets from Main Street to Stangle for walkability and a better connectivity from a pedestrian perspective. Seventy plus potted plants will be hanging, plants and hanging baskets, I'm sorry, going to be ready for install midweek. It's going to add some color to our business areas. The FCP would extend some thank you to DPW's watering efforts to maintain these flowers from summer well into the fall. It's been some very busy weekends on Main and Stangle, the first car show on Main Street, which was packed with people. Anti-cars, anti-cars, and the FCP would like to thank ShopRite for their thrill of the grill truck. The first Lone Eagle concert was also a great success, and they have a concert series all summer with bands such as The Nerds and the Smithereens. DII has been a great partner in bringing activity to the borough. Their Pride events this weekend were well attended, and we invite everyone to the Pride Dance Party on Stangle Friday, the 24th, from 5:00 to 8:00, where we will have Flemington Fresh talent singing, and I hope I'm saying the state correctly, Toby Churneski and other performers from 100 Central Regional High School, and they are quite talented. Please see the Love Flying to Calendar for free yoga, Pilates, meditation classes, classes for community and customers on Monday and Tuesday evenings, Thursday lunchtime, and early Saturday morning. The last FCP stakeholder event is on Wednesday, the 22nd, 22nd, sorry, where the FCP will introduce the new marketing and PR firm, introduce their new board, unveil a new storefront grant program with the additional $1,500 award for the NPP grant that we received to help storefronts with expertise and money to make improvements. And the last, they'll have updates from the development projects around town. Looking for volunteer paid historical tour guides, volunteer and paid, I'm sorry, for the summer, and we're looking for the corn and tomato beer volunteers. It's a well-loved event that is a benefit to our fire department. You can usually really use the help and provide volunteers with any goodies. So please email communications@flemingtoncp.com, and that is my report.
Excellent. That brings us to our first public comment session. If you are a member of the public, either here in person or online, if you're online, you can raise your hand by clicking the raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on. If we could have a motion to approve the minutes of May 23, 2022, regular council meeting. Tilly, you'll move.
One more second.
All right. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
I'm staying. Who is it there?
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes of May 23, 2022, executive session. Tilly, you'll move.
One more second.
All right. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
I'm staying.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Thank you. Excellent. That brings us to our consent agenda. If we could have a motion to approve items 1 through 4 on the consent agenda. Tilly, you'll move.
One more second.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
I'm staying.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Ready? Thank you. Next up, I'd like to make a quick change to the agenda. We do have a couple folks here who need to run, so if we could have a motion to move item number seven, Resolution 2022-148, after asking a redevelopment agreement by between the Borough of Flemington and HPC Liberty LLC to the top of the agenda. Tilly, you'll move.
One more second.
All right. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, good. If we could have a motion to adopt resolution, to put on the floor, Resolution 2022-148, after asking a redevelopment agreement by between the Borough of Flemington and HPC Liberty LLC. This is Liberty Village. Tilly, you'll move.
Johnson, sir.
Okay. So the reason I wanted to put this up is we do have our Borough Planner, Beth McManus, here. I want her to take a few minutes to talk about the affordable housing component on that. She needs to run in about 13 minutes, and then we're going to jump to our redevelopment council, Andrew Brewer, who also then needs to run to celebrate his 25th wedding anniversary. Good. And it's on the floor, right? Yes. Yeah, we did. Yeah. Just want to thank you. Sorry. Okay, Beth, you're going to go first on this.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for accommodating my schedule a little bit. So what we have is redevelopment agreement for the Liberty Village site, and there are various different components, which perhaps Mr. Brewer can't answer questions and can go over, but I'm going to focus specifically on the affordable housing, as you suggested. And the project is split into two phases, with the first phase being for sale townhouses, the second phase being for rent multifamily apartments. I'm going to start with the second phase because it's a bit more simple. The second phase, those multifamily apartments, will have a 15% set aside of affordable housing. That means that 15% of those apartments will be reserved for households with low and moderate incomes. Phase one, the phase that will start first, those for sale townhouses, those units have a 10% set aside of affordable housing. That means that 10% of that phase will be reserved for low and moderate income households. And then an additional 5% for a total of 15% will be reserved for affordable housing, but will do so as group homes or as special needs housing for adults with developmental disabilities. This is a common type of affordable housing, although not one that we see here in the borough, but group homes are eligible for affordable housing credit by the bedroom instead of by the unit. So what it does is it creates a very space-efficient way to provide affordable housing, and it also provides housing that is very much needed for those with special needs. And so the developer will provide a total of 15% in that first phase, with the 10% composed of the for sale townhouses that will be reserved or sold to low and moderate income households, and then the remaining 5% as part of special needs housing for those with developmental disabilities. The other point I wanted to make is that the affordable housing units in both phases and all types will be integrated with the market rate units. So that means that we will not have a specific building, or maybe a couple of buildings that are just affordable housing. Instead, the units will be integrated sort of seamlessly throughout the development. And then the last point I wanted to make about the affordable housing is that the special needs housing, that will be operated by a provider that specifically does this work, an organization that has experience providing housing for those with special needs. And so the developer will work to identify a provider that will either own or at least the units that will be composed of the group homes, but the borough will have the ability to review and approve that provider just to make sure that we are comfortable with how they intend to operate those group homes. And then the rest of the affordable housing will simply be administered by an affordable housing administrator, just like any other project. And by that, I mean the 10% for sale townhouses and the affordable units as part of phase two. So that's a pretty brief overview of what we're, of what's contained in the redevelopment agreement as it relates to affordable housing.
Thank you, Beth. I know you worked very hard on us getting there at that point as we were working through this redevelopment agreement. That was probably one of the biggest things that really took a lot of time to get to a place where the borough was happy, the developer was happy, and Fearless Housing Corporation was happy as well. So thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Any questions for Beth from council on that part? Thanks, Beth.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Good evening. Next up, we'll go to our Special Redevelopment Council, Andrew Brewer, who will talk about the main points in the redevelopment agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. What we have, and Beth talked about it quickly, is a redevelopment project for the area of the pull for Liberty Village area, near where the mall and the Polo Building, which we'll talk about a little bit. It's a two-phase project. First phase, as Beth alluded to, will be 160 for sale townhouse, stacked townhouse units. Second phase will be rental apartments. Kind of go attached to the draft redevelopment agreement that is up for approval is a concept plan, and this shows where, this is on Route 12, Stangle Road, if you're familiar with the area. This is where the townhouses will be. Here's where the apartments will be. So you've got to get your orientation. The townhouses are pretty certain. They know where the area is going to be. The apartments, there are still some flooding issues that they have to work out with the DPD in order to be able to move forward with those. So what, as I said, what we have here is a concept plan, where things will be. Because these agreements, the negotiations, these agreements has extended for several months, the redeveloper has financing commitments and its financial backers, in lack of a better word, need some assurances that they're going to continue to have the rights to do things. Where the municipality, obviously, we want to make sure that we have the right protections to make sure that you approve what everything looks like. So what's in front of the governing body tonight is an agreement that has the concept plan has been approved, but the redeveloper is also obligated to get approval from you, the governing body, for all the siteware, for what it's going to look like, what it's going to be, the materials that will be used, the layout, the floor plans, all of those still have to be approved. They are barred from going to the planning board until they come back and get approval for everything, everything you did say. So they have, what's before, one step, approving them as the redeveloper for the concept plan. So what's, what else is in play? So the first, the first phase is 160 stacked townhouse units with the affordable housing, integrated affordable housing that was discussed. There will be donation of a well parcel. That is going to be donation of a sufficient amount of land, approximately 100-foot diameter circle area for Flemington to install a new well when it is ready to do. Mr. Harris, the Borough's engineer, has been working with the exact location. Hopefully, it's going to be onsite. If it's not going to be, if the best place onsite is, best place is offsite, the redeveloper will acquire the property at their cost and donate it to the municipality. So phase one is going to have the unit, the 160 units, donation of the well parcel, a donation of an easement to access the existing well and the new well, if needed, and to expand the treatment building that actually treats the water comes up. So the borough will have access to bring on equipment to do maintenance, what to get on their regular basis from two places. They're also going to donate a public park, small park in the area that will have, you know, the standard slides, swings, things for children, and that will be donated to the town. And they're also going to donate the Polo Building as part of phase one. Finally, in phase one, they're also going to make a $1 million contribution to Flemington toward the infrastructure, so that can be useful, well sewers, whatever, whatever needed, but toward Flemington's infrastructure. And that will be, that 1 million will be donated, paid to Flemington prior to the issuance of any building permits for phase one. Phase two will be 225 residential rental apartments in five buildings. Again, there are some flooding issues. Again, there are some flooding issues and some drainage issues that they have to work out with the DPD and get some approvals. That's why that's divided into phase two. But that will also come with a one million dollar donation, a second one million dollar donation to Flemington for its infrastructure. As I said before, none of this happens until they come back and get approval. They're gonna have to come back, show plans, and they need the written approval from Flemington before they can ever go to the planning board. So you'll have another chance to look at what's going to happen. This is the concept and the timing and the schedule. The other thing that they're gonna have to come back for, and they're negotiating, is for pilot. There are some, you know, as I alluded to, with the drainage problems and the donations. This is a financially, if you wanna say it's stretched project, which could use some assistance. They're gonna, you know, for lots of different financing, one of the things they're going to be requesting is a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes or a financial agreement. In order to justify that, do that, they have to provide sufficient information to Flemington to demonstrate the need for it and how much it should be. They are in that process, working with Andrew Janu at Beacon Planning, who's also, who's worked with Flemington previously, who is very familiar with the finances and how to go through that. That process is started, but that's another thing that would be coming before you for approval as this process goes forward. On the, each of the units, what's going to require a hookup fees for water sewer. The hookup fees for the affordable housing units by ordinance statute are only fifty percent. But as part of this agreement, for the affordable housing, those connection fees will be waived. They will not, that's only for the affordable housing. They will not be waived for the market rate units, for both the townhouses and the apartments. Those will be fully paid. So that's going to be a part of this. As, there's also a provision that no more than ten percent of the units may be owned by one entity. So there's not gonna be some large, huge corporation that is controlling this after all. Only, no more than ten percent may be owned by any one entity. So those are the major, the major aspects of what's before you in the redevelopment agreement. There are also the standard provisions that all costs that Flemington incurs are to be paid by the developer. There's an escrow that's put aside, that's for engineering, that's for Jerry Harris, that's for drafting, that's for Beth, that's for beacon planning, all of that, all those costs are paid for by the redeveloper. There are standard provisions for a schedule, where they have to go forward with their site plan, when they have to go forward with requesting for you to approve the plans before they go with the site plan, get their permits, and then what happens to those things don't occur. So all those other standard provisions to protect the municipality as part of the agreement are in this redevelopment agreement too. And really, those are the major aspects of what's in here. And I think the important thing to remember is what's being approved is the concept. You know the numbers, you know what's gonna go on. The affordable housing has been ironed out, fair share is happening with it. Those things will be, are agreed to. But they're going to, they have to be back before you, before they can ever go to the planning board to see what it looks like, the site plan, and also with the financial agreement. So that's what's before you to approve the execution of that redevelopment agreement, to really continue this process. But as I said, they'll be back before you. If, that being said, any questions of the answer?
Anyone have questions? Tony?
No, I think this is great. No.
I just want to expand on a couple of things that, Andy, that you said, the park donation with the playground. That's that kind of little part that connects Brown Street to Liberty Village. So the historic home that is on that property will remain and will be rehabbed with its all, its historic glory. However, the rest of that property will become a public park with a playground. It will not be only for the residents there. It will be open to everybody as a public park and playground as well. The developer is working with the residents on Brown Street to design that playground. Eventually, he will, there's, the borough will carry, it'll be like, I'm not quite sure. Andy, he carries it, he has to maintain it, he has to provide, has to go to maintain it or fund to maintain it, but it deeds over to the borough, and that's just an insurance issue as well. So there. Also, the developer, just so everybody's clear, the developer is responsible for building his own infrastructure within the project. So the million dollar donation for phase one, the second million dollar donation is a general infrastructure fund donation that will go towards building a new well, building pipes somewhere else, perhaps in town. But within the project, the developer is responsible for building his own infrastructure within it. The borough will not be doing that. However, he will be working with the borough engineer to make sure that that infrastructure is to the borough's standards. This is not a public hearing. I'm sorry. Anyone else? Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Thanks. Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Thank you. And I see the developer is here as a part watching. Congratulations, Mr. Malone. We look forward to working with you further as well. And again, this is just one step in many to get us to where we are before a shovel ever gets put into the ground over there. I do think it's a very good redevelopment agreement. The committee worked very hard on it. I'd like to thank Alan Indo, who is a resident of Brown Street. I'd like to thank the council president, Jeremy Long. I'd like to thank council member Kim Tilly, our borough engineer, as well as planning board member Brian Bundy, who participated in this as well, and various other people who are consulting along the way to get this redevelopment agreement to where it's at today. I think it's a good deal for the borough, and we'll be moving forward with it. And you'll be hearing a lot more as we go on, but again, this is just one step in many. So thank you. This will all be placed out to the borough website tomorrow for you to look at, as well as the concept plan as well, now that it is officially out of draft. Draft. It is an official document. So thank you. Andy, thank you. Happy anniversary. Please give your wife my best.
Thank you. I will, Mayor. Thank you very much. Good night, all.
Next up is ordinance twenty-two-two-seven. This is an ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of Flemington by adding section two dash thirty, establishing community emergency response, otherwise known as a CERT program. This is a public hearing, so if we could have a motion to open the public hearing.
Tilly, move.
One second.
All right, Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, the public hearing is opened at eight oh five PM.
Any comments on our efforts to establish a community emergency response team? Now is the time to say that. You can raise your hand, or you can step up to the microphone if you're here. Seeing no hands go up, we'll go ahead and agree a motion to close the public hearing.
Tilly, move.
One second.
All right, Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that hearing is closed.
We could have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two-two-seven, ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of Flemington by adding section two dash thirty, establishing a community emergency response team, otherwise known as a CERT program.
Tilly, move.
One second.
Any council comments?
Not for me.
Okay. We could have a motion to, anyone, Tony, Liz, any comments, questions?
Nope.
Sally, call the vote.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, so that's it.
Next up on the agenda is Resolution twenty-two-two dash one forty-two. This is approving the appointment and hiring of Michael Humphries as business administrator as of July fifth, twenty twenty-two, and acting borough clerk as of August first, twenty twenty-two. We could have a motion?
Tilly, move.
One second.
Any comments, questions? And while you're doing that, I just want to talk very briefly. So as has been announced, our current clerk, Sally Graziano, riding off into the sunset on us as of August first in the form of retirement. We wish her well. We did host a job opening. We decided to kind of expand the role of that position to clerk administrator. We did receive resumes, and Mr. Humphries was the most qualified. We only received one other resume that was remotely qualified, and we probably could not have afforded that person based upon their current existing salary. And I appreciate that person including that, so that we kind of had also an idea as to where to go with that. Mr. Humphries will be doing the clerk duties as well as business administrator. He'll be handling a lot of our technology needs as well, helping us run some of the meetings. He's well versed in our SDL software that we use. So we are hoping he'll also be able to make that SDL software much more user-friendly for the public, which will be a very, very great enhanced benefit as well. Because it is an expanded position, the salary does go up. It will be a starting salary of eighty thousand dollars. It will be based to ninety thousand once he, once he receives his certification. Any other questions, comments about Mr. Humphries, or anything else?
We're losing, you know, a valued asset, but gaining somebody who's gonna have multiple abilities. And again, you know, as the mayor had mentioned, a fairly attractive candidate, seems very talented. But I think this is gonna be a good thing for the borough.
Anyone else? Sally, go ahead and call the vote, please.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Excellent. Thank you. We look forward to having Mr. Humphries on for here in Flemington Borough. And our best regards to Lambertville, who is losing him as well, and the many roles he filled down there. So thank you, everybody, for your support on that. Next up is Resolution twenty-two-two dash one forty-three, approving the schedule of payments for the Flemington area to the regional school district for the twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three school year. We could have a motion?
Tilly, move.
One second.
We're on item number three. Sally, go ahead and call the vote on that.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
It's approved.
Next up is Resolution twenty-two-two dash one forty-four, approving the schedule of payments for the Hundred and Central Regional High School District for the twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three school year. We could have a motion?
Tilly, move.
One second.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Next up is Resolution twenty-two-two dash one forty-five, awarding a contract for brownfields assessed from grant administrator to STAND Tech Consulting Services in the amount of five thousand dollars. We could have a motion?
Tilly, move.
One second.
So basically what this is, there's a ton of money out there for brownfields cleanup at the federal level and as well as the state level. But in order to do that, you have to have somebody who's well versed in brownfields assessment and cleanup. And so we will be asking STAND Tech to take over that to help us find some of that money to help us clean up some of our brownfields. Brownfields basically contaminated soil, and Flemington being an old industrial town, we have quite a bit of that around, including the Liberty Village property. We see some up at the Agway properties, particularly the Nillcant, the Tyroboy property, and other places throughout the borough, Turpott location, for instance. There's money out there to help developers who want to come in and develop that property. And there's, you know, there's money, free money, grant money to help them clean that up. But we have to be able to intelligently find it and administer that. So that's what this is all about. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Right, that's approved.
Excellent. Next up is Resolution twenty-two-two dash one forty-six. This is authorizing the award of a contract towards landscaping to remove dead trees and stumps on Main Street. We could have a motion?
Tilly, move.
One second.
So this is a very special kind of emergency expenditure to get this done. We have a few places, high-traffic areas, where we have some dead trees, particularly in front of the restaurant, Energy, up there on Main Street over by the monument. And there's one other tree along there that I'm trying to find. Normally, the adjoining property owner is responsible for removing these dead trees. However, this area up there, right by the monument on that curb, is a special exception. There is significant infrastructure underneath the roots of those trees. There is infrastructure above those trees. So in talking with the shade tree committee, as well as the owner of this property, I reached out to Mike Campion and said, perhaps we could get some votes to see if the borough could remove this, because again, it is an emergency. These are dead. We don't want these trees falling on cars going by on our Main Street. We do not want them falling on our businesses. We also want to do everything we can to make our Main Street as attractive to businesses as possible. Part of the whole economic redevelopment thing. After talking with our borough attorney, it was decided that we could do this as an emergency one-off expenditure. And so that is what we are doing here. This should be in no way considered to be a precedent for other places. Each one of these situations is considered on its own and separate from any other decision or vote that this council may take regarding tree removal throughout the borough, as well as any consideration that the shade tree committee may make regarding the removal of trees throughout the borough. Again, this is a one-off, very special exception, just due to also the infrastructure that is in that immediate area. We didn't want the property owner to be hiring somebody. Next thing we know, we've got watering breaks on Main Street, we've got power outages. I'm sure that the property owner would have reached out to us ahead of time, but it was quite, it was quite an undertaking to remove these particular trees. So that's it. So any questions or comments? No, we got pretty close. Okay, Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
All right, that's adopted.
Mr. Tom, we'll be in touch as to when that's going to happen, so you can plan and perhaps work with him and do it on a day, maybe that you're closed, so it has the minimal impact on your business.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I was very confused as to what I needed to do and what I needed to contact and what regulations.
You can say that during the next public comment session, if you want, to kind of come up to the microphone if you'd like. Next up, and that's it. That's the agenda. That brings us to our second public comment session. If there is anybody from the public who would like to make a comment, you can step up to the microphone. If you're online, you can raise your hand. Usually, we already stand on that. Please identify yourself and where you're from.
I want to thank the borough and- My name is Tom Chen. I live at twenty-seven Hoover Court in Flemington, Flemington, R. Towne. And the seven day street. Actually, one of the trees is the next-door neighbor's tree, but- But I, I was, when it first died, I wasn't sure who to go to or what to do and how to do it. And from what you said about the infrastructure, I had no clue how good that. So I really appreciate what you're doing. We're, we are planning to, we have a garden out front. We are planning to pay that over, make it a patio there. We're after seeing. It, it has some very nice irises, but they're, it's, but they're not blooming. They're a little bit outside.
You'll need, you'll want to reach out to the HPC and just to find our code enforcement officer about that as well. And I sent you an email to ask you to, you know.
Okay, is it, is that the historical preservation?